Good evening, the time is now 7:02. I would like to call the regularly scheduled city council meeting in order at this time. Can we have roll call, please?
We have six councillors present with councillor Forbeck absent.
Thank you. Item two is pledge of allegiance. May we all stand, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item three, special orders of the day and announcements.
We have our proclamation declaring October 8th through the 14th of 2017 as National Fire Prevention Week.
Vice President Duncan.
This is an official proclamation from the City of Beloit. Whereas the City of Beloit is committed to ensuring the safety and security of all those living and visiting the City of Beloit, and fire is a serious public safety concern, both locally and nationally, and homes are where people are at greatest risk from fire. And whereas, United States Fire Departments responded to 365,500 home fires in 2015, according to the National Fire Protection Association, and United States home fires resulted in 2,560 civilian deaths in 2015, representing the majority, 78 percent of all United States fire deaths. And whereas newer homes are built with lightweight materials that burn faster than older home constructions, and many of today's products and furnishing produce toxic gases and smoke when burned, making it impossible to see and breathe within moments. And whereas these conditions contribute to a much smaller window of time for people to escape a home fire safely, with people having as little as one to two minutes to escape from the time the smoke alarm sounds. And whereas a home fire escape plan provides the skill set and know-how to quickly and safely escape a home fire situation, and should be developed by all members of the household, and practicing a home fire escape plan twice a year ensures that everyone in the household knows what to do in a real fire situation. And whereas a home fire escape plan include two exits from every room in the home, a path to the outside from each exit, smoke alarms in all required locations, and a meeting place outside where everyone in the home will meet upon exiting. And whereas Beloit's fire responders are dedicated to reducing the occurrence of home fires and home fire injuries through prevention and protection education. And whereas Beloit's residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take personal steps to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas the 2017 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Every Second Counts," planned "Two Ways Out" effectively serves to educate the public about the vital importance of developing a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practicing it twice a year. Now, therefore, the city council president of the City of Beloit do hereby proclaim October 8th through the 14th, 2017, as Fire Prevention Week. Throughout the city urges all the people of the City of Beloit to develop a home fire escape plan with all members of the household and practice it twice a year, and to participate in the many public safety activities and efforts of Beloit's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2017, presented the second day of October 2017. Thank you, Chief Lickett.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
And you may want to step over and give a few more comments.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the proclamation. Every year, we've celebrated Fire Prevention Week. If you recall, this week commemorates the great Chicago fire, and also a fire that had a much greater loss of life and loss of property, and that was the Wisconsin Peschagow Fire, Forest Fire. Every year, fire departments across the United States go into the schools and work with our children to provide public safety, fire safety education, and we take every opportunity we can to work with community groups and churches and our schools. We appreciate everyone's support of our children in helping us take that message home, practice those fire drills, check your smoke detectors, set up that escape plan, have a meeting place, have a family communications plan so that you know how and where to go in the event of an emergency. And I would encourage you all, when you travel, to take and make sure you're counting all the doors to the fire exit in your hotel room. When you're in a restaurant, look for that primary and secondary exit out. When you're visiting a store, make sure you can see where the exit signs are when you're walking around, and take note of those, so that when you're in that location again, you have the opportunity to escape if you need to. Now, in light of recent events, the active shooters that have occurred in our country, the sadness that occurs there, remember your fire exit plan is also a plan for you to get away in those incidents. And I would encourage all of you, as you're reflecting upon the days events from yesterday, remember that your safety is paramount. Do everything you possibly can to escape, and the skills that you learn from fire safety can also help you in those situations. Thank you very much for this time, this opportunity, and I want to end on a high note. This year's theme, obviously, is about fire escape. We have a children's program that we send all of our third and fourth graders through at the Survive Alive House, and every year we hold a fundraiser at Pizza Hut. This year, again, on October 12th, we'll see everyone at Pizza Hut again. Firefighters will be serving pizza and waiting tables. We'll have apparatus displays, a fire pole, and fire prevention items for everyone to take advantage of, and firefighters to talk to about our experience and coaching our kids on fire-safe behaviors. So, thank you very much again for this opportunity.
Thank you.
Yep.
Item four, public hearings. 4A, please.
4A is a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow a Class II Community Living Arrangement for the property located at 800 Wisconsin Avenue.
Ms. Christensen.
Eric Williams from Derrick's House LLC has applied for this conditional use, which would be a facility for children ages 10 to 17. He has a pending offer on the property contingent upon approval of this conditional use. It is, he will have a contract with Rock County for these children. He would temporarily house both male and female youths, and who are either waiting longer-term placement in foster care group care or in a brief respite before returning to their caregiver. They're only going to accept children who have been assessed by the Rock County Human Services. These are not children who are in secure detention or in trouble with the law. These are kids who are in a section of Rock County, just awaiting foster care, and Eric's thought was that we should have a nicer setting for them, that no matter what Rock County has tried to do, it still has an institutional feel, and they want, he wants to give them an opportunity to have more of a home-like setting as they move on to foster care. This was, and it does meet the required parking. The required parking under the zoning ordinance is a half a parking space per resident room. It currently has enough spaces. However, Mr. Williams is intending to expand the driveway itself to allow for some additional off-street parking stalls. We did send a public notice out to 22 nearby property owners, and we did not receive any comments. I did hear some concerns from the community, however, no one did come to the Plan Commission meeting to request that this be denied. There was only support expressed at the Plan Commission meeting. He does plan to install a fence, which will require a COA, and he is aware of that and will follow the procedure required under the Historic Preservation Ordinance. He will have onsite staff 24/7 to be there, and his intention is to try to keep it as private as possible for the kids, to keep them as busy as possible, and really just to give them a positive home environment. So, Plan Commission did hold a public hearing at their last meeting, and they did recommend approval, subject to the conditions which are listed, which are that the applicant shall provide a copy of the child welfare license prior to housing youth at the subject property. The proposed privacy fence shall have a gate installed for emergency access to the rear yard. Shelter staff shall work with the Beloit Police Department to draft operational policies. And then, if it is determined that the Community Living Arrangement's existence poses a threat to the health, safety, or welfare of the residents of the city in the future, city council may order the Community Living Arrangement to cease operation. That is actually in the zoning ordinance, but we put it in here so that, just to let you know that there is that ability to look at this if a problem does occur. And then our standard about major changes coming back to this public process and minor changes being approved administratively. At Plan Commission, Tim Whedon did suggest that we limit this to 10 children, which is under the law, therefore be it resolved, because that is all Eric is proposing. There are five bedrooms. Code would require it to go up to 15, and so it is in there saying that it can only be 10, which is what the actual proposal is for. And additionally, I forgot to mention that the police chief and a couple of lieutenants did meet with Mr. Williams, and so that's where the draft, some of these conditions came up, and they were supportive of this application.
Okay, thank you. At this time, this is on the agenda for a public hearing. At this time, I would open the public hearing on item 4A. If there's anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening, please step forward, state your name and address for the record. First call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening. Second call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening. Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak on item 4A this evening. Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and entertain a motion from council to get this for discussion. Is there a motion by Blakely, or second by Duncan? Any councillor comments, questions, or concerns? Councillor Jacobson.
Hi, if I could ask the applicant a question.
If we could ask Mr. Eric Williams if he could come down and state his name and address for the record.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Eric Williams, 1990, Colony Court, Department 11.
Councillor Jacobson.
I just had a question about the children when they're there. I assume the child welfare license requires you to somehow keep the gender separate.
Oh, absolutely. So, all the bedrooms are on the second floor, so there's a landing at the top of the staircase, so our staff will be positioned there during sleeping hours. So, that's all we've come up with as of right now.
That was my only concern.
That was your only concern. Any other questions or comments from council? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second. You have a question, Councillor Blakely?
I just wanted to say, Mr. Williams, thank you for doing this. I think it provides a great alternative to the situation that these kids in transition have right now. So, I appreciate bringing it to the community, where the kids staying there, the percentage of children from Beloit is pretty much a match for...
To my knowledge, yes.
Right. I think you were talking about that a bit at the open house.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And it would only be Rock County kids.
Yes.
Okay. Councillor Preschel?
So, when I was there for the open house, I noticed that the electrical looks kind of old in there, the outlets and stuff, and you're aware of the things you've got to do to bring that house up to what you're going to need, and that's all in your budget and everything, right?
Yes.
You've got all that figured in.
Yes.
Don't want any surprises. New homeownership can be like that, you know.
Absolutely. No, I've had inspectors, and we know exactly what we need to do.
Okay.
So, we have a plan intact.
Okay, good.
And thank you.
One of the...
Councillor Duncan.
Yeah. One of the things I wanted to add that I really liked, I'm glad that we have this kind of program for our youth, but I was really happy to see too that you had mechanisms in place where the children would be able to be referred and be able to get the service, the help that they need. So, I just want to mention that.
Yeah, we want to try to keep them as busy as possible, keep them out of the house, so by the time they get home at night, they're tired and ready to go to bed. So, and thank me a year from now.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Seeing none, there is a motion and a second on the floor for approval. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes 6-0. Item five, we've reached a point on the agenda for...
Thank you.
We've reached a point on the agenda for public comments. At this time, people may come forward and discuss anything that is not listed on the agenda. You can fill out a form. If you did not fill out a form, you still may come forward to speak. When you come to speak, we do ask you to state your name and address for the record. We also ask you to refrain from any personal attacks on council, staff, and citizens. And what I mean by that is if you have general comments to make about a topic, we ask you to please make it general. I will not cut you off right at the three minutes, but I will give you a kind of an indication that you've reached your three limits, and you should start summarizing your remarks. However, if in fact, personal attacks do persist, then I will ask you to be seated immediately, because we do not run a meeting like that. We want everything to be professional. So, with that being said, when I say personal attacks, I also want to make sure that we do not utilize names. When I say keep it general, please come down and make general comments and not use people's individual names out of respect. So, at this time, we do have one individual that filled out a form, and I apologize if I messed up the last name, but Mark Sostrich?
That's very good.
All right. State your name and address for the record, and we'll start the time.
My name is Mark Sostrich. I'm the attorney for Michael Lampier, who owns the business Easton Towing. Mr. Lampier resides at 1143 Forest Avenue here in Beloit. Mr. Lampier, after a discussion with your council president, who suggested he bring this matter to the council's attention in public hearing, that's why I'm here on his behalf. He is here, if you have any questions later, for him. He runs a towing company. He is a first responder and is on your city's no preference tow list, and as a first responder, he has routinely kept a tow truck at his home. He has recently received three separate citations for maintaining a commercial vehicle near his home. The reason he has been doing this, and in fact, most of the 10 other people who are on your no preference tow list do the same thing, is so they can promptly respond to city calls within the city limits. This has gone on for years and not generally been a problem, but your ordinances, and specifically ordinance 19.8-107-D, does state that a commercial vehicle, such as a tow truck, which is a heavy vehicle, cannot normally be maintained in the city limits. We anticipate that this is going to be a problem for other tow companies to do exactly the same thing and maintain a vehicle in the city so they can respond promptly. His turnaround time is minutes now by being located with a truck in the city. If he had to use his main facility, you're looking at something coming in from Janesville, which is an hour response time. What he is asking is that this body consider adopting an additional section to the ordinance, which would allow approved contractors on your list to maintain one vehicle at their place of residence. This is consistent with prior practice. It simply is now becoming enforced by the Code Enforcement Division. We also have another member of the, who's on the tow list, Mr. Anthony Smith of Flying AJ's, who would share the same type of problem. We want to have availability promptly for the city. I'm going to ask for the city council to look into a possible adoption of either a new ordinance addressing this particular situation, or a new subsection to 19.8-107-D by adding a sub-E, which would allow them to maintain one vehicle, and would also have to be such that it would be with a weight requirement, which would recognize the weight requirement of tow vehicles. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing us to bring this to the council's attention.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Second call, anyone else wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Third and final call, anyone wishing to speak under public comments this evening? Seeing none, I would close the public comment section of the agenda and open up, go to item six with some consent agenda. All items listed on the consent agenda will be approved under one motion. So, anyone, unless the council wants anything removed. So, anybody who would like to want an item removed from the consent agenda?
Seeing none, the consent agenda consists of item 6A.
Is there a motion for approval?
Some.
Motion by Duncan, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Anderson. Questions, comments, or concerns? Seeing none, all those in favor of approving item 6A, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. Moving to item seven, licenses. 7A, please.
7A is a resolution approving and denying 2017 to 2019 applicants for an alcohol beverage operator bartender's license for the license period, September 8th to the 22nd of September. You have before you applications for 12 applicants, 10 of them being recommended for approval, two recommended for denial. The two recommended for denial were sent letters, and their timeframe for appealing has expired.
Okay. Is there a motion to approve?
Some.
Motion by Preschel, is there a second? Second by Jacobson. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes 6-0. Item nine, appointments.
There are no appointments this evening?
There are no appointments. Remove to item 10, council activities and upcoming events. Councillor Preschel.
Well, I attended the 40th anniversary celebration at Grinnell Hall last Monday, and it was well-attended. Sherry was there with me, and as everybody knows, the baby boomers are aging, and it's getting to be quite a busy place over there. And it's a very dynamic place, there's lots going on, and I'm really amazed at what they managed to put on with the huge volunteer staff and everything. So, we attended that, and after that, we had what the tech, which had about four people at it this month, because it was a little delayed. And then, this last weekend, went for a hike at Big Hill Park, and I noticed we have Beaver Dam out there again, and they're little busy little beavers. I've never actually seen a beaver, but apparently they're there. Park staff had told me they're definitely maintaining that dam, so it's not backed up too bad now. They'd already torn it down once during the hot spell, and they're already back, and it's looking pretty cool. So, and then we, of course, went out to the Apple Hut, and that's a great, wonderful thing for just north of the city, just north of Big Hill Park. So, it's fall, go out and enjoy it, and pray for some rain. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Jacobson.
Now that I figured out your mic, now you stop talking. That's all I got.
Okay, thank you. All right, Councillor Anderson.
Yeah, well, obviously, I am filling my end of the bet by putting on a blue tie, because Beloit did lose Janesville Craig in the homecoming game sadly. Thankfully, they did win last week, so something to look up to. As the donations went, we collected quite a few things. We actually got a total weigh-in, and it was 252 pounds of canned food, so that's pretty impressive. It's going to help out the county. Those of you that don't know, Echo does help out Beloit and Janesville, so it wasn't just a one-sided loss. You know, they help out places all throughout Rock County, so it's definitely a good thing. And besides that, you know, nothing else. You know, just go visit the Merrill Community Center. I dropped off some stuff to them too recently. Anything that they need, you know, shampoos, they do a backpack program now. That's something I did want to talk about. At the end of the week, they do give the kids backpacks full of items so they can take it home on the weekend. So, if you have any items laying around the house that you think might be useful to give to the Merrill Community Center, if not community action, please do.
Thank you. Councillor Blakely.
Yes, first of all, I just wanted to say that I know all our thoughts and prayers are going out to the people of Las Vegas, who were, who lost loved ones, who lost their own lives, or were injured in the shooting yesterday. So, our prayers to you. Last week, I got to go to the high school's homecoming parade, which was a real treat to see all that spirit on parade, so even though we lost the game, they were putting their heart and souls into that, and I appreciated it. I wanted to say, welcome to you, Beth. This is your first full official regular meeting. We're happy to have her with us. And I was speaking to Shannon Jolly from Beloit College today. She's Assistant Director of the Office of International Education. They run a great program that local families or individuals, or churches even, or clubs can get involved in. It's called the Friendship Family Program. It's fairly informal. You just contact their Office of International Education at the college and offer to get matched up with a student, and then just do informal things with that student throughout their time at the college. Doesn't require having anybody stay in your home, and you don't even have to make special plans. You can just invite them over for dinner, or if you have kids in school, see if the college student might want to go with you, just something like that. So, I highly recommend it, having sponsored college students before, including a friend from Japan, who sadly for my husband and me, is back in Osaka now, but we remain good friends, and I met her through the Friendship Family Program.
Thank you. Vice President Duncan.
Am I on? Am I on?
You're on.
Okay. I had the chance to attend the annual fall luncheon with Family Services on Tuesday, September 26th, at the Eclipse Center. They had a featured speaker, who was Dr. Robert, and I think it's, I want to say, Segi?
Segi.
Yeah, along with our city manager. You were there too, but he did a really great job. He shared information about how we can build a better Beloit through positive experiences. I was glad to be at that event and grateful that we have their services, that we have the services of Family Services during all the programming that they do. They have the Life Financial Solutions, Individual and Family Counseling, Employee Assistance Program, the Home Companion Registry, the CASA, the Court Appointed Special Advocate, Beloit Domestic Violence Survivor Center, SARP, the Sexual Assault Recovery Program, and Youth to You for Change. Special thanks to John Flidera, Alyssa Whitney, and the Family Services staff for their hard work that they do each day. And I want to again encourage citizens to consider serving on one of our volunteer committees. I serve on the Appointment Review Committee along with President Levy, and one of the things that we've been talking about is getting people more involved in our committees. So, all you have to do is very simple, is go on the City of Beloit website, click on the Board, Commission, and Committee vacancies to see what may be of interest to you, and complete a very simple application. It's just that easy. So, we hope you take time and take a look at that. And then in closing, I would also like to add, for us to keep the families in the islands, in Puerto Rico, and in Las Vegas in our prayers. That's all I have.
Thank you. I would like to also welcome Beth. So, now we have Beth and Beth on both ends here, so we got this good. But I want to thank everyone who applied for the position. A lot of qualified individuals, very positive about the city, and any one of them would have done an outstanding job, so I want to encourage them, as Vice President Duncan said, to get on some city committees. We have an election coming up in April. Feel free to throw your hat in the ring, but some people I'm going to be reaching out to directly, and I got a feeling they know who they are. Just tell them we got openings on some Appointment Review, on some committees and stuff, that they need to get involved in, because we can definitely use their expertise and their services, so. And not only those individuals, but as Vice President Duncan said, if you really want to move Beloit, continue to move Beloit forward, you want to get involved, get on one of the city committees. That's a good place to get started. We have a lot of them with any experience. I'm looking at some of the high school kids, students, not kids, students, but look into those as well. We want to thank you for being here, but look into those city committees as well. Oftentimes, we hear that they don't, they're not listening to us, they don't hear us. The only way we're going to hear you is to come forward and let your request and what you want from the city to be known. So, I know you're here tonight for a class, but do not be afraid to ever come forward and step up to the podium and just say, hey, because you're citizens here as well, and you're going to be the future. So, we need to know what you want to see in the city as well, because some of us down here are getting old. I just speak for myself. I say I speak for myself. So, my thoughts may, you may have some different ideas, and it being very important, spread the word, to come down, it's not, you can't get nervous, it's only a couple of minutes, but we need to hear from you. In order for the city to move forward and grow, we need to hear from you for what you want. So, and those conclude my comments. Moving on to item 11, city manager's presentation.
11A is a resolution canceling the January 3rd, 2018, and July 2nd, 2018, regular meetings of the city council for 2018.
City Manager Luther.
So, in establishing the calendar for 2018, we noted that the code of ordinances requires the council to meet on the first and third Mondays of the month. We recognize that two of those Mondays in 2018 will fall during holiday weeks, and we thought it would be appropriate to bring forward those dates to you for your consideration early in the process in 2017, so that we can schedule in advance for various boards and commissions that provide reports to the council or may rely upon the council for referrals, such as Plan Commission. So, given the way the dates fall, we are recommending that January 3rd and July 2nd not be scheduled as regularly-held council meetings, with the understanding that if specific business needs arise, we still have the opportunity for the council president to call a special meeting. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is there a motion for approval? Motion by Anderson, second by Duncan. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, passes 6-0. 11B, please.
11B is a presentation of the proposed 2018 Operating Library and Capital Improvement Budgets.
Mr. Miller.
As our Finance Director approaches the podium, I would just like to point out that the PowerPoint that he is about to present will be on our website tomorrow morning, that the full budget packet. I don't recall how many pages this year.
456.
456. Okay, very good. All 400-plus pages. Okay. Very good. All 400-plus pages are also available on our website, and so we invite the public to look at those documents. There's a transmittal memo as well that summarizes those documents. And we have a public, we have a budget workshop scheduled on Monday, on this coming Monday, at the library at 10:00. That is when we anticipate having detailed questions from the council and an opportunity to review the detailed budget with the council members. And the first public hearing is scheduled for October 16 at 7:00 in the City Hall Forum. So, individuals from the public that wish to be heard on any issues related to the budget, please note that that public hearing is scheduled on October 16. We do have an opportunity to schedule more workshops if necessary, and you will be hearing this information again, but it is important enough to repeat. So, we are prepared to present to you the recommended budget for 2018, including the library and our capital improvement plan, and I will turn it over to our Finance Director.
Thank you, City Manager Luther. Okay, so, the moment we've all been waiting for. I know, it's very exciting. So, we have been working on the budget actually for about six months now. We start this process way back in April, when we kick off our annual CIP kickoff meeting, and that's when really a lot of the action starts to take place behind the scenes with staff. And as we continue on through the summer, then we have multiple meetings with various department, division heads, along with other staff. And that's what we then prepare and work on to give you a balanced budget. So, I am prepared at this point to go through the operating budget for both the, all funds, as well as the capital improvement plan. So, I will get the presentation rolling here. So, first, we're going to talk about a few things, just in general, in terms of total budget. And as you can see, we have a total budget of all funds of $106 million. This is a pretty significant increase over last year's, which was about 9.7 million more than last year. But that is primarily due to the capital improvements budget. I'll speak to that a little bit later on in the presentation, but you'll be able to clearly see that the majority of the increase in the overall funds is from the capital program. So, the general fund budget is 31.1 million, which is about a $200,000 increase over last year. Very, very modest increase. This is kind of the theme for us lately. We just don't have the capacity to be able to increase the general fund by a significant portion, mostly due to the fact that we have levy limits that are still in place in the state of Wisconsin, so that we have to rely heavily on net new construction in order to increase our general fund. So, you can see that we did increase it by 0.65%, which is far below the average rate of inflation. The enterprise funds in aggregate decreased by 455,000, or down to 18.1 million. We'll see a little bit later on that this was primarily driven by the fact that for our 2017 budget, we had anticipated a 15% increase in our water rates, as the application stated to the Public Service Commission of the state of Wisconsin. They came back, and they only approved us for a 7% increase. So, even though it's still an increase in the water utilities' actual revenues, from a budget-to-budget standpoint, you'll actually see a decrease of 450,000. So, as we move forward, you can see in aggregate, these are all the different fund types, and I'll hit on each of those individual fund types later on in the presentation. And, but it just gives a little bit different representation there. You can see the 10.13% increase, as well as the 9.7 million dollar increase. And right below the final line there, you can see the capital improvement budget, 9.6 million. So, it's pretty clear that that is what's driving the overall increase. So, some of the budget highlights. Many of these will pertain only to the general fund. There will be a few on the next slide that hit some of the enterprise funds and so forth. But our general fund is our main fund. That's 31 million, as I mentioned earlier. One of the main departments in the general fund is the Department of Public Works, and so we will, and are, actually are, going through a restructuring process as we speak. And so, as part of that reorg or restructuring, we are in the middle of recruiting a public service director. So, part of the funding that it's going to cost to recruit that director will occur in 2017. Another portion will actually be included in 2018. One of the strategies that we employed over the last couple of years has been to hold open positions as they come free. And so, as a way to begin to build back some of that staff that we've left open over the last couple of years, just like we did last year, we are attempting to add some of those critical pieces back in. One of those critical pieces is in our IT department, and we had included a half of an FTE in 2017 that we were not able to fill. That position was not enough to meet the needs of the department. And so, we are proposing to add an additional half percent to the existing half percent to get 1% or 1 person. So, 100%. So, we now have one F, full FTE in our IT staff proposed for 2018. One other piece that we did add is in the City Manager's budget, which is a Director of Strategic Communications. That is a new position, but there was a, an FTE that was vacant from a couple of years ago, that had remained vacant, and so this has taken the place of that FTE. The rental registration fee was eliminated in 2017, and it is replaced with the voluntary complaint-based and systematic inspection program fees. You are all very familiar with that program, as we just talked about that over the last couple of months. But this will be the first year in which, 2018, in which the registration fee will be out, and the inspection fee program fees will be in. So, for 2018, the budget also includes a 1% cost-of-living adjustment. And as part of a way to help remedy our health insurance fund, we are also implementing, or proposing to implement, a 5% employee premium share for non-represented employees. City Manager Luther had talked about this pretty much since she got here a couple of years ago, and we found that the 2018 was the best place to try to target that increase or implementation. So, Shared Revenue and Expenditure Restraint are two programs that are funded by the state. We are heavily reliant on those two programs. The other is highway transportation aids. Shared revenue and expenditure restraint have been exceptionally flat for over a decade now, and we do not anticipate any increase in those two programs. And with highway aids, those are actually on the decline. So, we have seen now for three years in a row in the budget, a pretty sizable decrease in our state highway transportation aids of a total of around 400,000, just in the last three years alone. So, we are hoping that at this point going forward, that those will begin to stabilize, and that possibly in 19 or 20, we may actually see some increase in those. But with the state on a two-year budget cycle, we won't know that until a couple of years from now. One of the big items that was in the state budget this time was the phase-out of personal property tax. And so, that first phase-out will begin in 2019. However, one thing that was in the state budget, they did state that they would then reimburse the municipalities through state aids for the loss of revenue in that program, which is great, that we'll be made whole from that. The problem is, is that once the state has control over those funds, there's no guarantee that they will continue to fund that program in the same manner. So, it's a little bit concerning when we can lose potentially $900,000 of revenue to the city, because now that falls into the state's hands. So, we will keep a very close eye on that number. Thankfully, that's not an 18 number. That's a 19 number. But, so, net new construction, we had an increase of net new, or we decrease in net new construction from 0.231 to 0.85. 0.85 is still a good number, but we've just been spoiled the last couple of years where it's been a little bit higher. So, that's important because that helps what drives the levy limit. That's what tells us how much we can increase our general fund tax levy by. Assessed and equalized values, the assessed values have decreased 1%. Equalized values have increased 0.03%. And you'll see that those two numbers are going to be more in line with each other. On a later slide, you'll be able to see how they've really come in line with each other over the last couple of years. The local portion of the tax levy increased 288,000. Again, I just talked about the levy limits. We are still restricted by those, and I don't anticipate those going away anytime soon. The wastewater utility continues to propose modest increases. This has been a consistent program that we've been running for the last few years. Increases in the wastewater utility had been flat for many years. And so, in an effort to continue to incrementally increase those rates, this is the program that we are following, and it's really designed to help keep the infrastructure sound. This is an older utility, and if we don't keep our infrastructure up, there's going to be more problems later, and it actually costs more money later. The water utility, I spoke about this a little bit earlier, increased 7% instead of 15%. We will go back for another rate study in 2018, with hope to get results so we can implement in 2019. This is for the same reason, and you'll see later on in the capital improvement program, we have to go out for a revenue bond, and we need the funding to pay the debt service. That was all part of the rate study. So, it really is no surprise, as it was laid out in the rate study, that we'd be going out for a revenue bond. The ambulance fund is proposing to raise ambulance fees. This is simply due to higher costs, and it will help offset the cost of running an effective ambulance fund, or ambulance service. And then, various other fees are also minimally adjusted on an annual basis. That is typically your Parks and Rec-type programs in that department. Okay, so here is the revenues for the general fund by source. I spoke to many of these. A couple items, just to note, the licenses and permits is a decrease of 190,000. That is directly related to the, the reduction, or the loss, in the rental certificate program fee. But you can also see in departmental earnings, an increase of 248,000. That's the offset. That's part of the revenues that will be increased by the rental inspection program. So, you can see the correlation there between the two line items. It's simply just a shift in record-keeping of the revenue. Fines and forfeitures, the decline of 110,000 is directly related to municipal court. That would be the reduction in parking, non-parking, traffic, non-traffic fees. So, this is just the graphical representation of that prior summary table. You can see there very clearly that we have 60% of our total general fund revenues coming from state and federal aids, and that is the shared revenue program in expenditure restraint and transportation aids. This is the expenditures of the general fund by department. Couple of things to note in this particular slide is the increases that I spoke about in the City Managers Department. That, of course, is the additional FTE. The City Attorney's Office shows an increase, and that is simply because we consolidated the legal services from all the other budgets and put it into the City Attorney's budget. That was an effort to help basically keep an eye out on when to utilize outside attorney services. So, to be able to manage that all-in-one department is much easier to do. You can also see from the declines in the Community Development Department, that is just some reallocation of staff wages, and the Public Works decline is directly related to the reorganization that I talked about earlier. The increase in the Finance Department is where we house the 1% cost-of-living adjustment. So, that will be reallocated once the budget is finally approved, if that number is approved. Again, we have a pie graph showing the different expenditure departments. You can see that combined, the Public Safety Departments make up 62% of our general fund, with the Public Works Department coming in at 20%. So, between the three of them, that makes up 82% of our total general fund. Okay, before I go on to special revenue funds, are there any questions or comments on the general fund?
Any questions?
All right, rolling right along. So, proposed special revenue funds. Special revenue funds are primarily made up of our TIF districts, library, grant funds, recycling, solid waste, that kind of fund. It's designed for the revenues of those funds to be specifically used for that purpose. We had just a minor increase in the combined budgets for all of those funds of 97,000, which includes the Blender Cafe at the library, which had its grand opening just last month. So, if you haven't gone out, go out and check out the Blender Cafe. The Safer Grant was also budgeted in a special revenue fund. That grant expires at the end of this year, so that was not budgeted in 2018. Solid Waste and Recycling Program increased by 302,000. This is mostly related to the automation program. So, we have staffing allocation changes, as well as debt service on the equipment that they need for automation, and there is an element in our CIP for a, another building that will go up in 2018. Total TIF increment decreased by 430,000. This is simply related to decrease in equalized values amongst those TIF districts, and primarily, it relates to a couple of property value appeals that we had been made aware of earlier in the year that were settled. So, it had a pretty significant effect on some of those TIF districts, primarily TIF number 10. Enterprise Funds. Enterprise Funds are funds that we treat and account for, just like we would a private business. And those would include the golf course and cemetery transit and the utilities. There was the 455,000 decrease, which I talked about earlier. Again, most of that was due to the water change, the water fee structure change. I already talked about the wastewater fee and the ambulance fee, and the last item on the list is just the golf course fees, where we are proposing resident and non-resident fees. Internal Service Funds. These are funds that are paid for by other funds within the city. That's why they are internal. And you can see that an increase there of 967,000, or 8.2%. Of the 12.7 million, over 10 million of that is the Health and Dental Insurance Fund, both the active and the retiree funds. They are in pretty dire straits right now. They are in significant deficit. They are in significant deficit balances, which is precisely why we are proposing to increase the premiums by 10% to help offset those costs. And then as I talked earlier, we are budgeting a 5% premium share for nonrepresented employees. Aside from any minor co-pay changes, there were no other plan design changes that were proposed at this point. Debt Service Fund. The debt service fund is designed to pay debt service. That would be our principal and interest that is owed on all of our general obligation debt. And so you can see that we've got an actual decline in the overall debt service fund of about $750,000. And that was pretty much due to the fact that we had a refunding bond issue that was paid off in 2017. So that was pretty exciting. And the, it's interesting to note that the debt service levy is staying the exact same. So even though there's changes within the debt service fund, there are different sources from other funds that pay that debt service aside just from the levy. So the levy stayed the same. It's also noteworthy that general obligation debt service is exempt from the levy limits. That's one thing about levy limits that actually works in favor of the municipality, that you do have that opportunity to always levy the amount that is due on the debt. We have an obligation to pay those debt payments, so we have the obligation to levy for those if we need to. Cap Projects Fund, this is the one I spoke about earlier that showed the increase. Cap Projects Funds are not just the capital improvement fund. It also includes some other funds, such as CIP engineering, equipment replacement, and computer replacement. So the $9.6 million of increases to the cap project funds, 8.9 of that is actually increases in the actual capital improvement plan. Those would be actual projects that are looking to be done in 2018, and sometimes they carry over possibly into 19. So I'm not going to read the whole list of items that are there, but the big one to note is the $5.47 million. That is slated to be our general obligation debt issuance for 2018, which we will bring back to you first if the budget is approved. And then secondly, we'll go through the bond issuance process in the spring of 2018. That's been typically our schedule. The major increase here is really related to utility debt funding. We have not done a utility bond issue since 2010. We did a refunding bond in 2015, but that wasn't new money. This is new money. These are projects that we brought forward to the Public Service Commission when we asked them to raise our water rates. Part of that rate increase is designed to pay projected project cost of debt service. So we do have somewhat of an obligation to bring these projects forward because we committed to the Public Service Commission that that's what we were going to do. And so that's what we are doing. And that is to fund some very critical infrastructure at both the water and the wastewater plant. And then finally, the last piece of that is vehicle replacement. We actually had a decrease in the number of vehicles that we are proposing to replace next year. So the next slide is our proposed municipal tax levy. I talked about the 1.96%. What that does to the rate is it increases the rate for the local portion only by $0.21.7 per thousand of assessed value. And so if you just do the math on that, it's $21.70 per 100,000 of assessed value on your property. That's a way that you can kind of figure that out. So this is what our tax rates have done over the last five years. You can see a steady increase in the rate. A lot of that is due to net new construction. I have proposed for many years now that if there is available levy to be had from net new construction, we are going to take it. And unfortunately, this is some of the byproduct of that, is that you do, the more money you have to levy for, it can have an impact on the tax rate. But if you look at that rate over the last five years, it's really only increased by about 6.5%, which is pretty modest when you look at where the rate of inflation has been over the last five years. This is the slide I was talking about earlier with our assessed and equalized values. You can see in the red there, the assessed values have been fairly consistent, and the gray is the equalized values, which really has fluctuated up until these last three years where it should be noted that the equalized values are the values that are placed on the properties by the state of Wisconsin. The assessed values in the red are the values that we are locally assessing. So it makes sense, and it's where you want to be, where your local assessed values and your equalized values should be pretty close together, and you can see over the last few years they have been. So we're in good shape from that standpoint. We, of course, would like them to be higher, but it just takes time. And again, a part of this decrease was due to these settlements that we had earlier in the year that had about anywhere between $13 and $15 million impact on the overall values of the city. So it was, it was pretty significant.
Eric, excuse me. Back, going back in time to 2013 when you see that, that was still a holdover from back with the, with the bubble bursting in the, in the markets?
Not, not really. Yes and no. So 2013, the equalized values, as I indicated, were done by the state. And they put a value on our properties that we wholeheartedly disagreed with. We appealed those actually to the Department of Revenue. And so it took two years for us to continue or to complete the appeal of those property values. And in the settlement of those values, we, we agreed to keep the 2013 values status quo where they had assessed those at. And that's why you see the jump in 2014, because we did agree to an 8% increase in our overall commercial values in 2014. So that's why you see that bump up there. We still don't agree with those values that are up there, but being that we settled for those numbers, they'll only show on there for one more year, Mark, and then they're going to be gone. So we don't have to see them anymore.
I'm sure we talked about last year too.
Yeah, because in, actually, a couple of years ago, 2015 would have been the last year that we saw the fluctuation. Yeah, yeah, so they are gone. So the next steps, that is the, that is the budget. I know it's a lot of information in a very short amount of time, but as City Manager Luther mentioned earlier, part of the next steps is to have the council workshop next Monday where you will have ample opportunity to ask any questions that you would like to on the budget. And then in two weeks from tonight, we will have the public hearing. And then if all goes well on November 6th, we'll bring the budget back for council consideration for adoption. So that is all I have.
I, I do have a question.
Yeah.
And I'll defer this to yourself or the city manager. And I'm looking at 2018 proposed general fund budget expenditures. Looking for the 28 proposed budget. Seems as though in the top portion, all those budgets are increasing. And then as we look down towards the bottom for the public safety, police, fire, public works, those are decreasing. I guess if, if we can address that tonight, great. Otherwise, I would be looking for some clarification or some direction as to rhyme or reason why it seems, it seems as though that on the upper part, we're, we're increasing those budgets, and on the bottom part for public safety, we're decreasing those. And you want to?
Thank you. I'd be happy to begin. So this is a combination of factors. Over the course of the past two years and three budget cycles, we've been working to centralize services in a fashion with information technology, human resources, legal, for example. And so you'll see a continued shift of items that were in the individual operational budgets moving to those other areas. So we have an increase in the city attorney's office as reference that is a total of all citywide legal services that used to be previously distributed amongst the operational budgets. The same goes for recruitment and publications and other costs related to recruitment that are primarily occurring in the police and fire departments, and those can be substantial expenses. We also have centralized building maintenance function now in public works that we did not have previously. So while those show some small decreases in those departments, that is really a shift, again, to more strongly centralize the functions in a way to be more efficient and to overall save taxpayer dollars. You'll still notice that the total budget is only increasing .65%. And when the police, fire, and public works departments equate to 82% of the total budget as proposed, you can see that any small adjustment to those larger budgets is how we're able to make the whole thing balance. I would say, though, that these shifts are, in an effort, even with public information in the city manager's office as an example, that job description is written to have primary functions for police and fire and the public information activities that are needed in those departments, but it would be managed out of the city manager's office. So I hope that helps address the question. Eric may have a follow-up.
And so what I'm hearing, and we can definitely discuss it more on Monday, so what I'm hearing is those two departments are recruiting and if we're pulling that recruitment out, or the advertising and all that, so they're, they're not being charged for that, or they're not being charged for the media-related functions. So where they were paying for that stuff before, now that's coming out of the city manager's budget or someone else's budget?
Correct. So expenses that were previously budgeted within individual operational departments, and it's more visible in the police and fire departments as our, and public works, as our larger departments. We are shifting those expenses to HR, legal, and city manager. Admittedly, some of those public information functions in my office are new. That is the past assistant city manager position that has remained vacant. And quite frankly, in evaluating the cost of hiring an assistant versus hiring a director of communications, I thought that we had a better opportunity to bring an additional FTE at a lower cost to provide the most essential service that I believed the council had been directing was in need, and both the police and fire chiefs had agreed was essential to public safety as well.
Any other questions for Eric? I would ask counselors, if you do have questions, please jot them down, and we can certainly address them at the meeting on Monday, or if you want to send them to the city manager, Eric, ahead of time, at least they have time to research the answers. Because what I want to do is keep the process moving. So on Monday, when we come together, if we have questions, they've already had time to do research. What I don't want them to do is we present questions, and then they say, we got to go back and research, which can kind of lengthen the process. So if you have questions in the meantime, make sure we get them to the appropriate people. That, any other questions or comments? Seeing none, thank you. Go ahead, city manager Luther.
I apologize, Mr. Council President. Just in closing, you know, when we look at a general fund budget that is only increasing .65%, that really isn't sustainable in, in the long run. It is incredibly difficult to balance the total budget each year when revenue streams are so limited, and that's primarily from flat revenues from the state, given that that makes up 60% of our revenue, and our levy limits. So we will continue to do our best to provide services, but we must work within increasingly tighter financial constraints. So it isn't a rosy picture. I certainly think that a .65% is very fiscally conservative, but we simply don't have a revenue stream to promote any higher expense. So, thank you.
Thank you. That concludes 11B, item 12. We'll wait for a claim.
Item 12A is a resolution approving the First Amendment to Subdivision Development Agreement between the City of Beloit and DMW Development LLC.
Ms. Christians?
In 2006, you approved a, maybe not all of you, but a city council approved a development agreement related to a four-lot CSM. At that time, the developer extended Hart Road to Cadlec, extended it down to the southern boundary of Lot 3. They built Havenwood Point, put in the sidewalk, got approval of a condo plat, built a six-unit building, and then the housing market kind of did its thing. And so they kind of stalled. You've seen a couple of versions of a condo plat. The last version, which you approved in March, stuck, and so they're, they're starting construction on that. And they are proposing to sell the whole development to another buyer. And as part of that deal, the new buyer and them only want them to be responsible for the improvements that relate to the lot 2, which is where the condo plat is going. And so the street is there, and so the improvements that remain are, sorry, I can't read without my glasses, street trees, street signs, street lights, and sidewalks. So this amendment has been drafted to limit the responsibility of the development obligations of DMW, the owner of Lot 2, who's doing the condo development, to only those improvements along Lot 2. And if I missed something, I'm sure the city attorney will jump in and tell me.
Item 12A is on the agenda for approval. Is there a motion to approve? Motion by Duncan, second by Blakely. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all those in favor of approval, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, passes 6 to 0. Item 13, can I get a motion to adjourn? Motion by Preschel, second by Jacobson. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hearing none, we are adjourned.